I'd like to open the meeting at 7:07. We were in executive session to discuss real property, so that's where we were the past half hour. All right. Transmitting of the Treasury warrant, forty-three, forty-three A, forty-four, and forty-four A. Is there a motion to accept?
Show move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second motion made by Selectman Samagley, a second by Selectman Newhouse. All those in favor? And it's unanimous. We have the approval of the minutes, March twenty-fourth of this year, because we table that. Is there a motion to accept those minutes?
I'll move to approve the minutes as written.
And is there a second?
Second.
Second. Motion made by Selectman Shampoo, second by Selectman Samagley. All those in favor? And it's unanimous.
To abstain, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
I'll abstain also.
And there's two abstentions, Selectman Newhouse and Selectman O'Connell. Thank you. All right, our seven o'clock appointment. Robert Fazusa, was it Kason Donuts doing business at Honeydew Donuts? I request to obtain a common victual license for the property located at three-three-seven Main Street. Is that individual in the audience, Mr. Fazusa? Wouldn't you come up here, sir, just take a seat? And did I pronounce your last name right?
(inaudible).
That's a good answer. Good answer. Good evening. How are you?
Well, you?
Good. If you want to just tell us primarily what you'd be doing, then I'm going to turn the segment over to the town manager, because I know somebody from Honeydew Donuts was here a short while ago. Unfortunately, we saw them not there anymore, so I assume you're going to be the new owners.
Yes, I'm serving coffee and donuts, you know, at the location, opening hopefully next month.
No samples tonight for us to check it out?
Nothing in the building, yes.
That would have been, that would have been close. And right now, I'll turn it to the town manager. Jeff, how's the response from our department heads?
Okay, so Shelley Newhouse, the health director, indicates that she recommends approval of the application for the common victual license for Kason Donuts LLC, Honeydew Donuts at three-thirty-seven Main Street, subject to meeting all the requirements of the Board of Health. And Al Spalding, the building inspector, indicates there are no zoning issues.
All right. Any questions, comments, motions from the board at all?
I'm going to grant the request.
Is there a second? Motion made by Selectman Newhouse, there's a second by Selectman Samagley. All those in favor? It's unanimous, and good luck.
Thank you.
All right, have a nice night. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving right along, this part will go to the town manager. The Board of Selectmen, discussion, proposed changes affecting Recreation Department beach program at Silver Lake.
Yes, last year, you may recall, I guess in part because of the, the season that we had in terms of weather, it was very warm. There was a high level of participation over at the, or attendance at the, at Silver Lake. There were also incidents where, I know in one case, one of the lakes in Andover, for a period of time, they were, had shut it down to non-residents. So I think for a combination of factors, Silver Lake saw a real surge in terms of the population there. That in, in concert with some ongoing issues that we've had for a number of years now, resulted in a series of issues that residents in the neighborhood raised. And I'll just highlight some of them. They included parking on the streets, Grove Ave, for example, and also Cottage Street. People were parking in the vacant lot at the corner of Cottage and Main Street, and even along Cottage Street, so that homeowners were having difficulty accessing their property. Similarly, the police were along, on Grove Ave on a regular basis, trying to move the cars along there because they were parking it along that stretch. Also, we had parking down at the old DAV lot, which, if you're familiar with the area, it's kind of a triangle parcel at the intersection of Wild, Wild Ave and Grove Ave. Instances during the evening hours where people were going to the beach area, loud music, smoking, drinking, certainly not activities that are conducive to a family environment. Overflow of trash at various times, particularly on the weekends, and that was creating a health, well, certainly unsightly and potential public health concern. There were certain days where the main beach area was just getting crowded to the point that the lifeguards had to limit the number of individuals that were going in there. Dogs on the beach area, and actually in all of those areas, both the, the main beach area, the area where the fishing pier is, and also even up along Main Street, if you're familiar with the area, there's a white bridge and a monument off of Main Street. The town owns that property. All of these areas, dogs were, people were bringing their dogs. The dogs were disruptive, certainly on the beach area, to the patrons, and also obviously, given their tendency to want to do their business there, that was not something that we wanted to have in a public area. So that issue was raised again by residents. What we found when we began to look at ways to deal with the issues was that there was a lack of enforcement ability, or statutes in place, in some cases. So for example, the police department, when we checked and looked at the ability to, for the police department to enforce the no parking along Grove Ave, even though we believe that at some point in time, the Board of Selectmen approved a no parking area on Grove Ave, we were not able to find that in the records. So that's one of the elements that we'll be talking about tonight, is seeking the board to approve restrictions for parking on Grove Ave. Also, in terms of the issue with dogs on the beach, there was no provision, either town bylaw or directive of the Board of Selectmen that prohibited that. The other issue that apparently was, had come up at various times, is that people would be grilling out on the, in the beach area, some of these public areas, which, while it's not permitted, there was not a bylaw or any kind of a sanctioned restriction that, that bars that. So as a consequence of this, we're looking to try to address these issues this year, and hope to avoid some of the problems that came up last year. And ultimately, you know, the people who live in that area make life a little easier and more pleasurable for them. So what, if you recall, there was an article at the town meeting, Article thirty-five, that town meeting members, participants passed, that authorizes the Board of Selectmen acting as the Parks Commissioners under Mass General Law, Chapter Forty-five, Section Five, to establish specific regulations and associated fines for certain infractions at the beach. So one of the things that I'll be recommending tonight is that the board adopt certain restrictions. So those, I think, combined with the current regulations that already exist in terms of the Board of Health, and certain policies that have been established by the Recreation Commission should address these issues. Specifically, what I'm suggesting in terms of the board action is that the Board of Selectmen prohibit dogs on those town parcels between the months of May and October. So this evening, for example, if the board is so inclined, I would suggest that the board vote to prohibit dogs on, on those parcels immediately going forward through October first, and then thereafter, beginning May first and through October first of each year. And then, secondly, I would suggest the board take a vote to prohibit the establishment of fire pits or any type of open flames, or use of grills, or other types of cooking devices on particular parcels. The parcels that I have in mind would be map forty-five, parcel one-eighteen, which is eighty Main Street. Again, that's one of the parcels right off of Main Street where the White Bridge and the Monument are. Map forty-five, parcel one-seventeen, which is seventy-nine Main Street, joins the first one. Map forty-five, parcel one-eleven, which is Grove Ave, that's the, what is referred to as Baby Beach. Map forty-five, parcel one-oh-three and parcel one-oh-two, those are also noted as forty-seven and forty-nine Grove Ave. Those are the parcels near the Fullerton, the Fullerton Monument and the area near the Fishing Pier. And then also, map thirty-four, parcel one-thirty-eight, which is referenced on the, the maps as five Burnap. And that is the, the, the main beach, includes the beach house there and the parking area. So that is what I would suggest, with the caveat, at least with respect to the use of a grill, that there be an allowance via permit for, for specific groups to provide, you know, grilling. Specifically, I'm looking at the, the police always have their beach day in early August, and we would allow that to continue if that, if the, if they're so inclined to do so. So with that, with that exception, I think those would be the recommendations.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Manager. I know this is long overdue. We need to really put some teeth into what enforcement needs to be done relative to the police, and obviously the documents are before us. I see the chief in the audience. Chief, you want to respond to any of this at all? Because I know we need to give you the proper tools, and obviously town meeting has set forth on that.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to say that I appreciate the board's attention to this matter, and obviously, you know, we put a committee together. We met briefly with the, I shouldn't say briefly, met with a group of the community that live in the area, a couple of months back, and we listened to their concerns. And this will kind of assist us in addressing some of the issues we've had down there. Over the years, obviously, it's a pleasurable place to be. We've seen a spike in attendance in the area, and we're just trying to make sure that whatever we do, you know, doesn't, doesn't hurt that spirit. But in the same tone, we, we have to be able to control some things. There has been some folks pitching tents down there, trying to camp out overnight, and, you know, they, it's because it is a beautiful area, they think they can, you know, come in and take advantage of that. So it just allows us to, especially with the new bylaw, to be able to promulgate rules and regulations that we can actually enforce, and get down there and, and clean the area up a little bit for the folks. So I do appreciate it.
No, I'm in total agreement. It's a great tool for the community. As you know, it's a great pond, and considered the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Anybody can go down and swim here at Silver Lake. And we've got to obviously take care of the good folks that live in the area. And it's a lot of times that the outsiders come in and ruin it. And it doesn't really give us a strong enough teeth to what we really need to do. But I think this is definitely going to help the town. This is the best direction that we can, you know, go forward. And any other comments or anything from the board at all?
If I, very quickly, and I'll ask the chief to speak to it. I know you've already done so, but I think maybe, I don't want to speak for the, the community, but the question has been raised to me, why don't we just make it a resident-only facility? And I've tried to formulate an answer based on information that you've shared with us in the past, but I probably didn't do it justice. And I, if you don't mind, could you help answer that question again, as to why we must make it available, as Mr. McCoy just said, to the general population surrounding towns?
I don't want to overstep my bounds and pretend to be a historian, but I believe that, as a great pond, this was established in colonial times, when the king had restricted access to certain ponds for purposes of fishing and trapping and furring and things like that. And the colonists were upset by it. So one of the things that they established back then was these certain access protections to great ponds and waterways within the Commonwealth. And dating back that far, it's hard to go down and identify a mass statute that specifically details it. But in the CMRs, it does keep it open public access to a certain extent. You can make some restrictions on it at this time, but you can't completely restrict it just, just residence only. So, you know, the frustration of that is, is, well, we also have a public access area there, the Rockwood Deepersqually Fishing Pier. That there, by statute, has to be left open because it was funds brought in through the state that, that allowed that to happen. But you can restrict what happens there as well. So there's no fishing off, no swimming off of the pier, because it's designed for fishing. And so it's, it's a kind of a balance, because you want to give people access. And certainly just because someone is an Wilmington resident, doesn't mean that they shouldn't be able to enjoy, you know, some of the assets of the Commonwealth. But with that balance, respecting the neighbors in the area, as well as Wilmington residents, and trying to kind of make everybody as happy as we can by promulgating some rules and giving some enforcement ability to get out there and make it consistent across the area. For years, it's been kind of patchy. If you go down and you saw multiple signs along the fences, and they all said something different. And so we're trying to make it all consistent, so that the whole area, as a recreation area itself, would have consistent rules to follow.
I would just add to the chief's comments there, that this is really a pretty comprehensive approach. In addition to these provisions that we're looking to put in place, we're also going to be taking up all the fencing that exists on town property that runs along Grove Ave and around the edge there by Burnap. And that'll be replaced with new fencing. The area on, at the so-called Baby Beach, there's an area where you can actually, even though it's restricted directly off of, off of Grove Ave, you can kind of walk around the side and go in the side area. So that'll be fenced off, both on Grove Ave and from Grove, perpendicular to Grove, if you will, all the way to, all the way to the water's edge. One of the things we're going to try this year is to restrict, or actually prohibit access to Baby Beach, because we're also increasing the, through the rec department, they're increasing the fee for the permit to, to access the beach on a daily basis. In the past, it was five dollars per person. You could get a seasonal pass. The rec commission has eliminated the seasonal pass, and the fee is now going from five dollars to ten dollars. So it's going to be more expensive for individuals that don't live in Wilmington to go to the main beach. Residents can still go free of charge. But one of the consequences that we anticipate there, and it happened last year, people decided they didn't want to pay the fee to go to the main beach, so they would go over to Baby Beach, and they'd be parking over on Cottage and along the stretch at Grove Ave. So we're going to try this, this year, you know, to some degree, it's a matter of, a bit of estimating as to what, what the impact is going to be. You know, my expectation is that there's going to be some measure of frustration amongst residents, and particularly people who live in that area, not being able to simply go over there. But as the chief indicated, this is a balance between trying to curb some of the activities that were going on over there, and trying to provide a measure of access to a real resource. So beyond the new fencing, there's also going to be a wooden rail fence that will divide the main parking lot, if you will, from the Fishing Pier. Because as the chief indicated, the Fishing Pier needs to remain open twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. So there'll be parking specifically for the Fishing Pier. But during hours that the lifeguards are not on scene, the main beach will be closed. So one of the things we've done to try to accommodate people to some measure is that the beach hours, which in the past have been ten AM to six PM, are now being expanded, or will be expanded from, to ten AM to eight PM. After that, when the lifeguards leave, the parking lot will be closed, the access to the beach will be closed and locked. So people are not going to be permitted on the main beach. Again, the rationale here was that we were getting calls, and the chief can probably speak to it more specifically, but calls from people pulling in there nine, ten o'clock at night, the radios blaring and drinking and so on, and the neighbors were frustrated by that. So this is intended to try to curb that behavior. We'll also be installing new signs that intend to be more, you know, consistent, send a consistent message as to what the rules and requirements are, and, and clean it up essentially, so. Thank you.
That was one of the questions that I had had, was just the signage, which I assumed was part of the general housekeeping. Will you also be doing any sort of media releases relative to, like the town choir, for example, for anyone that maybe wasn't at town meeting or isn't listening to this meeting right now, that maybe something in the town choir that discusses some of the changes, so that we can reach out to people proactively, so that they know what's going on, per se? I'd like to think everybody is paying attention, but...
Yeah. Hopefully, the coverage tonight will help, but we will certainly look to consider that, put something in the town choir and on the town's website, you know.
Thank you.
I know there's a lot of people that train there, swimming. How does this affect them? And will they have to pull a permit? And if they do, where, what office do they go to to get the permit?
Yes, there is a group that has been using that area for the last, I guess, three or four years, maybe. They use it as a training area for triathlons. And again, trying to balance the demands here, we will establish a permit process. It's my understanding, this particular group in the past has indicated that they have insurance, and would be able to provide an insurance certificate and meet certain requirements. I mean, one of the issues that I'm certainly mindful of, and I think the chief and the Recreation Director are mindful of, is that, you know, we also don't want to create, you know, unnecessary risks for people getting out literally, you know, over their heads, so to speak. And so, you know, we want to make sure that the people that are accessing that area are able to do so safely. My expectation is that there would be a mechanism for them to obtain a permit, and we'll establish, you know, the requirements as to when they can go out and do their swimming.
Thank you. All set? All right. I noticed in our audience, we have a wonderful department recreational director, Sabriani, here, who does an outstanding job here at the town hall. Would you like to make a comment pertaining to this at all?
Thank you. I think that everybody, the chief and the town manager have done a great job trying to explain everything. Want to know that we share the frustration with the residents. We hear it, we see it, and we're trying to work everything. We've had several meetings with different department heads that are all involved in this. So this didn't, we didn't come to this lightly. It's taken a lot. And our job is to try to, you know, provide a safe and fun recreation area, and a healthy one. And that's what we want to do. So it may take some adjustments over the road, but this is what we figured to start out with this. We have to start somewhere. We think this is a good start, and then we'll monitor it and change it as need be. Thank you for your...
All right, thank you. Anybody in the audience want to make a comment, sir? I see you here at the meeting. Any of the kids?
I just had a question. So Baby Beach, if you're putting a fence along the street and perpendicular to the water, does that mean there's absolutely no access?
That's the plan for this year, is to eliminate the, the access there, because what we found last year, and I'm anticipating this will happen even more so this year, people, and essentially, these were people from out of town, they would come in and want to go to the lake, would realize it was going to cost five dollars a head to go to the main beach. And then they'd go over there to the Baby Beach area and, and, you know, park their cars over on Cottage or along Grove Ave, which created other issues. There was some amount of drinking going on over there, so the police had to respond to that. So my expectation is, if we do not restrict access there, we're going to have the same issue. People are not going to want to pay ten dollars a head to go to the main beach, so they're simply going to go over there and, and, and use that area.
So even access from wildlife, people with boats and canoes, can they pull up there and use it or not?
I would expect that, you know, if you're in a boat, you can pull up there. I mean, I don't know that we're looking to have people necessarily setting up shops, so to speak, on that area. But I don't know that there's any prohibition against, we wouldn't be looking to make any prohibition against somebody pulling up to the shore there and, you know, getting out and reorienting or whatever they need to do.
Did that end? You just raised a question in my head. Where do you put in canoes or, or kayak or something, a small watercraft?
Where can, where can those be put in?
There is no public landing there. They do have a town landing that the fire department uses when they have to go out, and they recently used it for the last rescue that they had out there. But it's usually individual residents that live along the lake.
Yeah.
Put their boats in from, from their own land. You can rent a canoe, I believe, from the Recreation Department and go out around as well.
I can put something in here for you. Thank you.
Most of that, a lot of that land is private.
Yeah.
So when you look at it, it's, you know, the individuals who live off of Grove Ave or Lake Street or whatever, actually own right up to the waterfront. So there's not a lot of areas where you could access it publicly.
Thank you, chief. Yes, sir.
From a standpoint of overcrowding, I really appreciate, I think it's a terrific idea of raising the, the out-of-town rate. I think that'll be a big help in that area. Is there the ability, if you see, if you do see a lot of overcrowding in the year in June or July, is there an ability, what you have or are planning on putting in place, to potentially raise the rate even further to kind of tamp down the overcrowding? Or is it a fixed ten dollars, if that's what it was agreed to?
Well, I, my expectation is, for this year, we'll, we'll go with the ten, because that's what we're publicizing at this point. I mean, in the end, as was done last year, the, the head lifeguard that's on at any given shift, they have to make a judgment call as to when there's, you know, too many people or a max, a certain number of people on the, on the beach that they feel is, is appropriate. I mean, ultimately, the lifeguards are responsible for keeping an eye out for anybody in the water, and they, you know, and it all depends. There's no fixed number. If you've got, you know, thirty adults and fifty kids, that's, you know, one thing. If it's, you know, maybe five kids and thirty adults, it's, but it ultimately is a judgment call on the part of the head lifeguard as to when that number is, you know, when, when they're at their max. So that was done last year at different points, and I would expect that that would continue again this year.
Okay, thank you. All set? The town manager informed me. He'll interject at any time. Obviously, we need to make a motion to approve this, to have a document. So I imagine we need to take into account what the town manager has recommended to us verbally, as well as the document before us this evening. And Jeff, you want to interject anything we should do to make sure that this thing's binding?
Okay. Well, I also just want to mention that, again, going to the rec director's point about the process, we did have a hearing on March thirteenth, or I shouldn't say a hearing, a, a public forum, where we, and we publicized it via our, our website and otherwise. And we had a very good turnout, I thought, residents, both in the Silver Lake area and otherwise. And I thought it was a very good back and forth discussion. So, you know, we heard from people in terms of what their concerns were. And so these recommendations were based in part on some of the feedback that came out of that forum. In terms of specific action that I would suggest the Board of Selectmen take, I would suggest that the, regarding the, the issue of dogs, that the Board of Selectmen vote to prohibit dogs on town property at these specific locations... vote to prohibit dogs on town property at these specific locations, uh, map forty-five, parcel one eighteen, which is eighty, eighty Main Street, map forty-five, parcel one seventeen, which is seventy-nine Main Street, map forty-five, parcel one eleven, Grove Avenue, it's the so-called Baby Beach area, uh, map forty-five, parcel one oh-three, which is forty-seven Grove Avenue, map forty-five, parcel one oh-two, uh, which is forty-nine Grove Avenue, and map thirty-four, parcel one thirty-eight, uh, which is five Burnap Street, uh, to take effect immediately and continue through October first of two thousand fourteen, and thereafter to remain in effect from May first through October first of each year. That would be, uh, one motion, uh, or vote I would suggest the board take.
You, you expect more than one motion vote, or we all incorporate all this into one relative to the document for us?
Uh, well, you could make it as two separate or, or one. The other element to this, uh, would be to prohibit the creation of, uh, fire pits, any type of open flames, or use of grills, or other types of cooking devices to, uh, to prepare food on town property at these specific locations. Again, map forty-five, parcel one eighteen, map forty-five, parcel one seventeen, map forty-five, parcel one eleven, map forty-five, parcel one oh-three, map forty-five, parcel one oh-two, uh, and map forty, uh, thirty-four, parcel one thirty-eight, uh, subject to issuance of a permit, uh, to be granted by the recreation commission, um, as needed, um, by example for police speech day.
I think I believe I can accept everything under one motion. Everything pertaining with the town manager has just stated a moment ago and during the whole part of this, uh, appointment relative to seven oh-five to seven fifteen. Uh, is a motion to accept this before us, this document, and incorporate what the town manager has stated?
Sold.
Motion made by Selectman Newhouse. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Selectman Samoglia. Are those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you, chief. Appreciate all your input, and thank you, uh, Mrs. Sabriani. Our next appointment is really is some, uh, housekeeping. Every, uh, first meeting after the annual town meeting, there's always reorganization of the board of selectmen. Tonight, we're going to be, uh, taking a vote for a new, uh, chairman. I want to take this opportunity and thank the members who voted for me for the past year, gave me an opportunity to serve as chairman, and I believe every, anybody sitting up here can do a great job as chairman. I hope I did this board proud. I believe that I represented the board to its full capacity. I supported the board in certain things that we did, for example, uh, the construction of the new high school. I defended the board in its opposition. I also defended, I believe, the town manager, and I thought it was the right thing relative to the, uh, Fourth of July on our festivities and pertaining to any personal matter, that he had a call pertaining to the town, so, I just would like to say that. And once again, I hope I did the board justice, and I like, as chairman of the board, you never make a motion or you make a second, and I would like to, obviously, put out to entertainment, uh, entertain anyone's motion for a chairperson. I believe, as chairman, that I, you know, if there is support, I think Judy O'Connell has done an outstanding job as a member of the board of selectmen, and I would obviously like to throw some support to Judy if there's, uh, support here as well. Anybody's, it's open for discussion or...
Certainly, I support Judy. Judy's, uh, I, I, well, let me, before I even get into that, if I may, um, I want to compliment you, Mr. McCoy, on the, on the service that you've rendered as our chairman the last year. You have said it a number of times that, um, we're getting the, the, uh, the duty of the town done. Um, we, uh, we do so in a way that allows everybody here to speak their voice and to have an opinion, even if that opinion is different from somebody else's on this board. Uh, we can differ, uh, without, uh, without it being confrontational, and I admire that, uh, and it's what makes us, I think, a, a well-oiled machine, and you led us well over the course of the last year. To Judy, um, yeah, certainly, I, uh, I have had the great honor and pleasure of working with her, uh, now for, is it three years? Right on. Time flies. Uh, so I would, uh, I would most loudly support, uh, her as our next chairman, and I would second that, or I guess I would make, you can't make the motion, right, Mike?
I just put that out there, you know, if there was support for Judy, I think she would do an outstanding job as our chairman, and, and obviously, it's the, uh, membership, and, uh, I don't see it being an issue. And I'll open up for more discussion if anybody wanted to say anything, like...
Well, uh, given the, the comments that have been made and my own thoughts, I'd simply just nominate Judy then.
All right, then, why don't I do that, make that a, that's a motion for Selectman Newhouse to appoint...
Sure, I'll make that in the form of a motion.
Sure.
Uh, move that we appoint, um, Judy O'Connell, the chairperson.
All right, and, Mr. Shampoo, you want a second?
I'd be glad to second that.
All right, there's a motion on the floor, the board Judy O'Connell is our next chairman, and there's a second by Selectman Shampoo. Are those in favor? It's unanimous, and congratulations, Judy. The vote is five to zero.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Take that. Nice. All right.
Thank you. Thank you. Here we go. Get the big chair. Yes. Thank you. Well, first, I would, um, like to thank everyone for the positive comments and for the nominations. Certainly, I'm very pleased to have been just appointed to this position. I'd also like to, uh, thank Selectman McCoy, uh, for the last year of service. I certainly, uh, could echo the comments that have been made by my colleagues. I certainly think that you have taken a leadership role over the last year. You've led this board very well. I think that we've had a very productive year as a board. I think we've worked collaboratively as a team. Uh, certainly, we can respectfully agree to disagree on things, and I think the civility and the professionalism that's existed on this board over the last year is largely in part to your leadership, Michael, uh, so I want to thank you for the last year, and I certainly intend to take the ball and run with it, and, uh, certainly work hard on behalf of this board and have an open mind, and, uh, certainly have a listening ear, and, uh, work with the board and with the residents here and at home to see that the town's business continues forward in two thousand fourteen and beyond. So, uh, wanted to thank you all, and, uh, certainly like to continue the business of the meeting and turn it over to the manager for communications. Thank you.
Uh, first item under communications, uh, is my memorandum to the board of selectmen regarding the, uh, certain promotions. Uh, I'm pleased to announce my intention to appoint Deputy Fire Chief Richard McCullin to the position of Fire Chief for the Wilmington Fire Department effective June second, two thousand fourteen. Deputy McCullin will replace Chief Edward Bradbury, who is retiring after more than forty years of dedicated service to the town. Deputy McCullin has served as Wilmington's Fire Department for over thirty-one years. As a firefighter, he was an active member of the juvenile fire setter intervention program, pursuing training in arson intervention and performing screenings. He was promoted to lieutenant in two thousand eight, uh, bringing his tremendous skill and knowledge to the role of investigations and training administration for the department. With an in-depth knowledge of fire apparatus and equipment, he has assisted in coordinating the department's management over, of over two-point-five million dollars of fire apparatus. September of two thousand twelve, Lieutenant McCullin was appointed to the position of deputy chief. Uh, as deputy chief, he has focused on enhancing the emergency medical services provided by the town. He has promoted the utilization of technology and data to evaluate the department's emergency medical response, and assisted in the development of the town's nasal Narcan pilot program, uh, which is now a statewide model. Uh, as chief, Deputy McCullin will be responsible for a relatively young department. Uh, he will ensure our firefighters are able to provide excellent medical, fire prevention, and fire suppression services in the most effective and safest possible manner. I'm also, uh, pleased to announce my intention to appoint Lieutenant Gary Donovan to the position of deputy fire chief. Lieutenant, Lieutenant Donovan's commitment to serving the residents and businesses of Wilmington is demonstrated by his unblemished record of thirty-one years of fire service to the town. He has served as fire lieutenant since two thousand eight. Lieutenant Donovan holds an associate's degree in fire prevention and safety technology from Middlesex Community College and is trained in hazmat operations. As deputy lieutenant, Donovan will play a critical role in supporting the new chief and ensuring the department is effective. Lieutenant Donovan will be called upon to assist with assessing the needs of the department, recommending and implementing measures to improve responsiveness and safe work practices, and working with the department's personnel to maintain open and effective lines of communications. The demand for emergency medical and fire-related services continues to grow in Wilmington. It is my belief that this new management team, in conjunction with the support of the lieutenants and firefighters, are prepared to move the fire department to the next level of customer service. Please join me in congratulating Richard McCullin and Gary Donovan on their upcoming appointments and wishing them both well in their new roles. I have correspondence, uh, directed to, uh, Garland Hilliard, who is the Director of Environmental Remediation, uh, at the Olin Corporation. Uh, I have been informed that the Olin Corporation has declined the request to have a representative present during the next public information forum on June tenth, two thousand fourteen, at seven PM regarding remediation efforts at Olin's Wilmington, Massachusetts facility. The Olin Corporation's participation in these public information forums is critical to demonstrating corporate commitment to addressing a very serious contamination problem. The fact of the matter is that the town was required to discontinue use of five of the nine water supply wells in March of two thousand three. Until that time, these wells were the principal source of potable water for the residents and businesses. Residents, federal, state, and local officials are all concerned and attentive to taking steps to contain and reduce the contamination plume and its impacts. James, uh, DiLorenzo, project manager with EPA, has been quite judicious in scheduling public information meetings, as the last meeting was scheduled on November thirty, two thousand eleven. He recognizes the balance between keeping the stakeholders of Wilmington informed about the ongoing efforts, uh, in cost, in time, and resources to EPA and Olin in, in participating in these forums. The town of Wilmington, EPA, and Olin are inextricably linked to this project. Neither Mr. DiLorenzo nor the town officials can speak for Olin during these meetings. Uh, the public deserves an opportunity to ask questions of Olin about its involvement in the work to date and its intentions going forward. Having a representative from Olin participate in these upcoming, this upcoming public meeting will provide that opportunity for residents and give Olin a firsthand account of the questions and concerns expressed. I strongly encourage you to reconsider the decision to forego participation in the upcoming public information meeting.
Jeff, with this, um, historically, in the past, have they participated in these sessions?
They have. Uh, the, the last one in two thousand eleven, um, there was a representative from Olin, uh, at the meeting.
Do we have any indication as to why they're not participating? Is it a schedule conflict or...
Uh, I, this, I don't have any specific, uh, information to that effect. My understanding is that, um, it's not a scheduling issue, it's, uh, but I can't say specifically why they're not inclined to participate.
Could I humbly ask, uh, that if you hear from them at any point, I don't know what the method of communication would be, but it, I don't know, it seems clear, I appreciate this letter very much, and I'm, when I read it, I was surprised to find out that they had elected to forego attendance at this June tenth, uh, meeting. So, um, you know, once we hear absolute response, whether they are or are not coming, I'd love to hear that, so we could, uh, you know, potentially take appropriate action or, or at least have a discussion about what act, what, what action we should. I, I guess I just, I humbly ask you to keep us posted.
Will do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Yours, I'm in front of Lemon Conestry. I don't have any direct information either, but I, if, if you're willing to listen, I can give you thirty seconds on some speculation as to why they may be turning away.
Sure.
It's my understanding that there was a pneumatic slug test that was done to establish the integrity of that retaining barrier that was built, and they failed this pneumatic slug test, and I think there's a lot more issues, and, uh, hopefully, if the meeting does go forward, Jim DiLorenzo can explain that to the town. I don't know that that's the case, but, and I'm not really involved in, in that case. I just had some very peripheral involvement, and my, it was my understanding that that was not good news for Olin, that, uh, that slurry wall may have technical issues and problems that they weren't, not anticipating, and that might have changed the picture for them. I'm just going to throw that out there, and maybe the town can follow up on that and ask Jim to...
Well, I certainly wanted to give you the opportunity to speak, but just to make your point, you indicated that you're not sure that that information's accurate, so I just want to disclaimer that to the public, that, you know, we want to be able to get factual information, so I appreciate you coming forward with that, but I'll turn it to the manager to, uh, do his due diligence to see if he can inquire and get some, uh, factual information to share with us as a board and to the community.
Yeah, I, I will certainly, uh, speak with Mr. DiLorenzo and, and inquire as to whether this has anything to do perhaps with their reason for declining the invitation.
Thank you.
I'm also pleased to report, uh, that the Police Department, uh, is receiving a grant of one hundred thousand dollars. Uh, it's fifty thousand dollars, uh, a year for the next, uh, two years. Uh, this was initiated, uh, on behalf of the Police Department, uh, from the Cummings Foundation, uh, and just to highlight, uh, some of the things they're looking to do here, uh, the department is seeking to replace and consolidate their aging, uh, electronic mobile signboard and mobile speed trailers. Uh, the signboard, um, yeah, is deployed during community events, detour notifications, as well as public safety notifications. Uh, two mobile speed trailers are deployed to give drivers feedback in regards to their speed in relation to posted speed limits. Uh, the department is also looking to replace, uh, the signboard and speed trailers with a combined Speed Alert Radar Message Signboard, which incorporates both functions. Uh, we are seeking to purchase two of these devices in addition to our traffic safety initiatives. Uh, we are, uh, seeking funding, um, for some of our community outreach programs. In the past, the department has provided, uh, the rape aggressing, uh, rape aggression defense program and the CPR training to members of the community free of charge. Uh, the RAD, so-called, program provides self-defense training to women through an established program that includes lecture, discussion, and the teaching of self-defense strategies. Uh, a normal class has approximately twelve to twenty students and runs for a total of sixteen hours, broken up into four evenings of instruction. Uh, the department is also looking to purchase three new red man, uh, protective suits for training at a total cost of forty, uh, four thousand two hundred and ninety dollars. The CPR class offered by the department, uh, was developed by the American Heart Association. The course is an eight-hour course and is usually broken up into two or three evening sessions. So, uh, if you recall, uh, the department, for a number of years, has, uh, had, uh, programs, the RAD program, for example, the, um, CPR, you know, these programs that are very community-oriented, designed to, uh, provide, um, members of the community with, uh, some education. Unfortunately, uh, the, the funding that was, uh, supporting those activities dried up, and so, more recently, the department hasn't been able to, uh, offer the programs, but due to the good work of the chief and his, uh, folks, uh, they continue to seek out other funding opportunities, and they, uh, this one was successful.
Very good news. Hey, chief. Beat this, that's a sharp stick in the eye, then.
Uh, we have correspondence from the Massachusetts Department of Revenue, Division of Local Services, uh, reporting on the Shawshine text, uh, what is referred to as excess and deficiency account. It's essentially similar to the town's free cash number, uh, and the, uh, reported number is a negative five hundred and eighty-two thousand six sixty-nine. Um, just also following up on that, I did receive an email from, uh, Charlie Lyons, who's the superintendent, uh, and he, uh, reports that he wants to assure us that they're, they are not in a deficit position. Uh, his specific quote is, although poor is compared to the wonderful free cash balance enjoyed by our member towns, I guess he's referring to Wilmington, uh, we received all funds, uh, owed from the MSBA after June thirtieth. So, essentially, the reason for this deficit, it was, it, it was a snapshot in time, and they were, had not been fully reimbursed from the MSBA for a project that they had done. So, my understanding is that they're okay. We have correspondence from the Central Mass Mosquito Control Project. They're advising, uh, about an award they received, Merit Award for two thousand fourteen from EPA, uh, and the program, uh, that they received acknowledgement on, uh, addresses a, um, a tire recycling program, uh, through their efforts in working with their forty-one member communities, uh, they have recycled, uh, eleven thousand five hundred tires, totaling, uh, which essentially, um, as you know, with, uh, tires and wetlands and various other places, it provides, uh, uh, significant breeding grounds for... in wetlands and various other places, it provides significant breeding grounds for mosquitoes. As a result of their efforts, they are able to avoid the use of 720 pounds of pesticides, and so they’ve been acknowledged for their efforts. Also, we have correspondence from Deborah Costas, the treasurer at the Shawshine Valley Regional Vocational School, providing us with the revised operating budget for the Shawshine School for fiscal 2015. The total budget is $26,961.85, and the total assessments to the member communities is Wilmington’s assessment is $3,757,747. I would note that our budget estimate was $3,767,358, so essentially, we’re $9,611 to the good, so that’s good news.
That’s always a good sign.
It is. We have correspondence from Paul Bruce. I would like to personally thank your office, along with the Board of Selectmen, for allowing me to serve as constable for the Town of Wilmington. I am formally requesting that the Board of Selectmen renew my constable license for 2014-2015 year. I thank you in advance for your time and consideration. Also, we have correspondence from Ronald D. Giorgio. Please reappoint me as constable for the Town of Wilmington, Mass. I have been a constable in Wilmington since August 26, 1992. My bond is current, and I am still at the same address, 11 Merit Road, Burlington, Mass. I retired as a Superior Court officer from the Superior Court after 28 years and will be doing constable work full-time. I am also bonded as a constable in Medford, Somerville, Woburn, and Cambridge. Thank you for your consideration. Just a note, there was a letter I had sent back on April 7th to Mr. James Trombley. This is in writing on behalf of the Board of Selectmen in compliance with Mass. General Law Chapter 51, Section 15, as it pertains to appointment of a member to the Board of Registers. Please accept the letter as official notification from the Board of Selectmen that the term of Edward L. Sousa, a member of the Board of Registers representing the Republican Party, will expire on April 30. Mr. Sousa has indicated that he is interested in reappointment. And it’s my understanding we did not receive a response, did not receive a response back, so I guess at this point, technically, it appears that the term has expired. We’ll have to follow up and find out about their intentions. Under Board to Consider, we have Board to Consider Recertification of the Parking Restrictions on Grove Ave., Burnap, and Pond Street. There’s correspondence here from the police chief. Upon your request, the Police Department has conducted a review of the parking restrictions along Grove Avenue, Burnap, and Pond Street. Our research was unable to locate the time, date, and origin of a passed vote by the Board of Selectmen establishing the current parking restriction on the above-listed ways within the Town of Wilmington. Although we are confident a previous board has established the current parking restriction, we advise the matter be revisited by the current Board of Selectmen and request our suggested plan be approved. Please see the attached map and plan which details our suggested parking restrictions for the Silver Lake Recreation Area. Each of the board members should have received a map. I’m not sure, the chief may want to offer comment here, but essentially, the proposed restrictions, Chief, do you want to address those specifically?
Yes, thank you. Currently, there are no parking postings up and down Grove Ave., Burnap Street to Pond Street around the corner of the parking lot. Our research, we were trying to identify the board meeting that actually approved that years ago, and we were unable to do so. We’re confident that it did happen, but we couldn’t find the exact dates. We figured we’d ask for recertification because the parking issues came up during our debate with the residents relative to the whole process of what we’re going through over the reorganization of some of the rules and regulations in the area. One other thing we saw was signage as an issue. A lot of the signs were faded out where you couldn’t see them anymore. Some of them were kind of facing sideways, and we just wanted to make everything consistent down along the street. So this restriction would follow from the southwest corner of Three Grove Ave., which is the business on the northern side of Grove Ave., as well as the boarding house that’s right next to it, that’s Three Grove Ave. From there, all the way down to Burnap Street on the northerly side of Grove Ave. The southerly side of Grove Ave. would be from Main Street all the way down to Burnap Street as well, encompassing that area where the DAV used to be. And then the entire length of Burnap from Grove Ave. to Pond Street, and then Pond Street in a direction to the southwest corner of one Pond Street. So it would be just to the end of that area where it takes that left-hand turn and goes into where the residents are, and it would kind of encircle the lake, public access of the lake areas.
So we need a motion from the board, essentially, would we define it as a certification versus a recertification, since we don’t have the past just term as such?
Yeah.
So we’re covered. Questions or comments or a motion from anyone on the board?
I move that the town adopt the parking restrictions as presented by the chief of police in his May 5, 2014 memorandum and as further described by the chief.
Motion’s been made by Selectmen Newhouse, second by Selectmen Semaglia. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor? Unanimous? Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Do you have a grant to pay for those sides?
The next item under Board to Consider is a request from Khalid Hazmeele to obtain a hawk and pedal license to sell ice cream. This gentleman has, at least in the past, through the procurement process, been selected at various times to serve ice cream or sell ice cream at Silver Lake. One of the requirements before, in order for him to qualify under the procurement process is to have the hawk and pedal license. As you may recall, at the last prior annual town meeting, there was a bylaw that was passed requiring fingerprinting of certain categories of individuals, including those who are obtaining hawk and pedal licenses. The request came into the Police Department, and they in turn have made the request for the fingerprinting or have taken the fingerprinting, have not received any results back yet. So I would suggest that this request for the hawk and pedal be tabled at the moment until we receive the results back.
I’ll move that we table this Board to Consider motion for Mr. Hazmeele until he responds to that request.
Motion’s been made. Do we have a second?
Second.
Been seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous? Thank you.
Next is the Board to Consider Appointments and Reappointments to the Board of Appeals, Board of Registars, Council for the Arts, Advisory Board, Fence Viewer, Scholarship Fund Committee, Town Accountant, Town Council, and Constables.
I’d like to take these up. Do you want to?
I can take them up by, actually, maybe just go through them in their entirety and then, yeah.
Fine. Thank you.
So under Board of Appeals, five-year term to expire 2019, Anthony J. Valetta, Jr. Board of Registars, three-year term to expire 2017, Edward Sousa. Council for the Arts, two-year term to expire 2016, Jane M. Crane and Jean A. Chan. Council for the Arts Advisory Board, one-year term to expire 2015, Sarah E. Brooke, Marguerite Eli. Fence Viewer, one-year term to expire 2015. I would note, we do have one vacancy, formerly Anthony Pronsky. Then John T. Spalding is the other to be appointed. Scholarship Fund Committee, three-year terms to expire 2017, Joanne M. Benton, Suzanne L. Clarkin, Carol A. King, Robert G. Peterson, Michelle Kyra Nortonan. Town Accountant, term to expire 2017, Michael Morris. Town Council, one-year term to expire June 30, 2015, John Foskett as the principal representative from Deutsch Williams, Brooks, Durensis, and Holland, PC. For Constables, one-year term to expire 2014, Paul D. Bruce, Jr., Alan C. Hunter, Charles E. Rooney, Jr., John B. Bridges, Jr., Ronald M. DiGiorgio, William F. A. Pepacelli, John J. Rowan, and Anthony J. Say. Ellen G. Davis-Sawyer, only in conjunction with duties as Animal Control Officer.
Okay, the Selectmen Appointments and Reappointments have been read by the manager. Would anyone like to make a motion to this effect with the understanding with Ellen G. Davis-Sawyer only in conjunction with duties as an Animal Control Officer?
I’d make a motion to accept as described by the Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Motion’s been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous? Thank you.
The next item, Board to Consider Ratification of Town Managed Appointments and Reappointments to the Commission on Disabilities, Historical Commission, and Permanent Building Committee. We have Phyllis P. Janetti for Commission on Disabilities, three-year term to expire 2017. Historical Commission, three-year term to expire 2017. Gerald R. Duggan, Robert Mallett, and Kimberly Geon. Then Permanent Building Committee, three-year term to expire 2017. George W. Hooper and John C. Holloway.
Thank you. Would anyone like to make a motion to this effect?
I move to ratify the town manager’s appointments as outlined by the manager.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Thank you.
Motion’s been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous?
Then the Town Manager to announce the appointments to various boards, committees, and commissions. This is just to note that the Animal Control Officer for one-year term, expire 2015, Ellen G. Sawyer. Animal Inspector, one-year term to expire 2015, Ellen G. Sawyer. Building Inspector, one-year term to expire 2015, John T. Spalding. And then Peter R. Maggie as the local inspector. The Cartel Lecture Fund Committee, three-year term to expire 2017, Andrea B. Hauser. Cemetery Commission, three-year term to expire 2017, Pasquale D’Antonio. Conservation Commission, three-year term to expire 2017, Julie A. Flynn, Sharon Kelly Perella. Conservation Commission, unexpired term to expire 2015, Robert A. DePalmer. Conservation Commission, unexpired term to expire 2017, Charles E. Rooney III. Elderly Services Commission, three-year term to expire 2017, John Wallace and Robin Thaddeus. Then we have Elderly Services Commission, unexpired term to expire 2017, Gail A. Proto Papas. Electrical Inspector, one-year term to expire 2015, Frederick Sutter. Arthur T. Kelly is the alternate. Gas Inspector, one-year term to expire 2015, Paul J. Rafi. John J. Mitek, Jr. is the alternate. Board of Health, three-year term to expire 2017, Elizabeth E. Sabunjan. Library Trustees, three-year term to expire 2017, James M. Lemay and Elaine C. McDougall. Metropolitan Area Planning Council, three-year term to expire 2017, Carol S. Hamilton. Open Space Committee, one-year term to expire 2015, Judith A. Waterhouse, Charles Michael Burns, Michael Fay, Phyllis D. Janetti, and Beverly A. Shea. Planning Board, five-year term to expire 2017, David G. Shed. Plumbing Inspector, one-year term to expire 2017, Paul J. Rafi, and John J. Mitek, Jr. is the alternate. Public Wayar, one-year term to expire 2015, Paul Anderson, Kenneth M. Heffron, Stefan J. Stella, and David A. Shigru. Recreation Commission, three-year term to expire 2017, C. Michael Burns. Veterans Agent, one-year term to expire 2015, Lou Semaglia. Veterans Grave Officer, one-year term to expire 2015, Louis Semaglia. Water and Sewer Commission, three-year term to expire 2017, George R. Allen. Wiring Inspector, one-year term to expire 2015, Frederick Sutter and Arthur T. Kelly is the alternate.
Jeff, just for re-clarification, for the Plumbing Inspector, the one-year term, that’s to expire 2015, correct?
Yes.
It’s on page two? Okay, just want to make sure. Thank you. So before we move into public comments, I just wanted to acknowledge the family that’s here in the front row. It appears that we have a scout here this evening. I just wanted to publicly acknowledge you on behalf of the board and thank you for coming. Wanted to give you an opportunity, if you’d like, to introduce yourself to the board, maybe state your name, how old you are, and where you go to school, and maybe some of the things that you like about being a scout.
My name is Joseph Consordi. I’m a Star Scout in Troop 26, and I’m here tonight to listen in on some of the things you guys will be discussing and report them back to my friends for a merit badge called the Citizen Strip of the Community Merit Badge. And welcome.
Thank you. Do you want to introduce who you have joining with you tonight?
This is my father.
Hi, Dad.
Hi, Bob Consordi, the father of Joseph.
Thank you.
And I want to thank the board and the manager for all the help that we’ve gotten from scouting for the years.
Thank you.
Very good.
Any public comments?
And Joseph plays a heck of a game of soccer, by the way. I’m just saying.
Excellent. Any public comments?
Not tonight.
Not this evening? Thank you. New Business Committee reports, like to start at my right, please?
Couple of things. First of all, just the way the conversation went, I didn’t get the opportunity to tell Mr. McCoy nice job in the past year, keeping the meetings thorough but productive and efficient. I appreciate it. Also, with regard to the town meeting that occurred a little over a week ago, and following up on the town’s decision to put a decision off on the Woodfield School till next year at town meeting, I just wanted to follow up in the interim and ask the manager if he could let us know when the RFP documents would be available. Certainly, if there’s any prospective user who would like to relocate that building or to buy pieces of it, as was suggested by some folks prior to town meeting, there’s no reason why we should stop going that direction in my mind. And then also, another takeaway I had from the town meeting was that, and this is true for the time leading up to it as well, some folks in the Historical Commission seem to think... think that we can communicate more with the Historical Commission. Maybe that's the case. I would ask the manager if he could let us know at our next meeting what their meeting agenda looks like in the coming months, and then just ask the respective board members to consider between now and our next meeting whether or not anyone's interested in being a liaison to that commission for the purposes of moving forward with the Woodfield, and for that matter, the Butters Farm House, and any other projects they have in the pipeline. That's it. Thank you.
I think that's a great idea. Certainly, I want to let the other board members speak, and I'll have my comments at the end, but I certainly think what you're proposing certainly makes sense, Selectman Newhouse, and I certainly would support that, and I'd probably be offering some additional comments. Lou?
Yeah, I mean, I'd just like to say to Mr. McCoy, if I got anything out of the military, it was, you always needed good leadership. And I think last year you exemplified good leadership. Like Mr. Newhouse said, the meetings moved along, we got the town's business done, and it was a very good year of the board. I'm sure Judy will have a good year as well. I think it was a great choice. Also, as far as a liaison for the Historical Commission, I think that's a wonderful idea. It'd be, open the doors, the windows of communication, lines of communication. I think just the way everything kind of went down and the way we feel, I think, I'm not offering anybody to do something they don't want to do, but I think Mr. Shapu, that would be a good liaisonship for you if you wanted to report back to us and maybe get the schedule of their meetings, and I think it would be a good way to go.
Well, we'll take that under advisement, Lou. Thank you, sir.
Mr. McCoy?
Once again, congratulations, Madam Chair. I know you're going to do an outstanding job, and I appreciate the kinds words that you said, and I want to thank the entire membership on the kind words. And I think this board, and I'll say it again, I've served on many boards, I think this board is perhaps one of the most productive boards. We're getting along great, and at the end of the day, we're taking care of the people's business, and I think the people who foot the bill in the community realize that. And I think this board has done an outstanding job, and I know Beverly does a great job here, and I want to congratulate the town manager. I think in the past year and a half, he's done an outstanding job as town manager. Very proud of appoint you, and I think everything's going really great. Once again, thank you, and go Scouts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Couple of fluffy things here. I want to say, "Attaboy, Joe." Good job. Good to see the Scouts here. Joe's on my soccer team, and he's a good kid, so it's nice to see him here. I wanted to make a point, though, I didn't take the time earlier in the meeting to congratulate Chief McGlellan and Deputy Chief Donovan for their appointments. So that's good news for them and for the town. They're very skilled gentlemen, and they'll be an asset to our fire department, more of an asset than they already are. I know Jeff is going to go through important dates in a few moments, and one of the things that he'll talk about is the Memorial Day Parade. I don't think, we're not going to meet again as a member or as a board before then, so I just want to encourage folks who might be watching this in a rebroadcast to come on out on Memorial Day and have a great day. Specifically, come to the parade and enjoy the parade, but if you can carve out an extra 15, 20 minutes to walk down to the cemetery after the parade and participate in the solemn ceremonies that our Veterans Agent, Louis Samaglia, assembles and puts on every year, it's worth the extra few moments to pay tribute to those who have gone before us in service to our country. I want to congratulate and thank all of the appointees that we either voted for or ratified or heard about this evening. Thank you for their service to the town. And lastly, to Mr. Newhouse's comments, I certainly support the idea of reinforcing what I believe we already have as a collaborative relationship with the Historical Commission and other commissions around town government. But if there was any kind of perceived notion that somehow their board and our board had not been as collaborative as it could have been, I think it will go a long way towards sort of pushing that aside and making that history, as it were. So I certainly support the idea of creating some sort of conduit or liaison or whatever term you want to use for it so that we can have an open and collaborative relationship going forward. I know, Mr. Newhouse, historically, you have, or this board and boards before us, have worked closely with them, have taken their advice to heart in making decisions and casting votes, so I'll be glad to be able to have us get back to that sort of open and positive working relationship. So it was a good suggestion you made. Thank you.
Just a friendly reminder, did you want to add something about the...
Oh, I did, thank you. Yeah, I did. I printed it, but I wrote on it. Yeah, thank you, Judy. We were notified, or Judy and I were asked by a member of the Wilmington Educational Foundation to read this, so I will very briefly. "They are hosting a Red Sox World Series Trophy on Friday, May 23, 3:30 to 5:00 in the Wilmington Middle School Auditorium. Doors open at 3:00 PM. First come, first served. Free and open to all." That bears repeating, "Free and open to all." Get your photo taken with the World Series Trophy is a great way to start off your Memorial Day weekend. And again, that's being sponsored by the Wilmington Educational Foundation. The Red Sox Trophy Middle School Auditorium, May 23, starting at 3:30, which is a great thing the educational foundation is doing. Thank you for reminding me, Judy.
Sure. I'm going to turn it back to you, Selectman Samaglia. Do you want to make a comment on...
Oh, yeah, no, Mr. Shapu touched on Memorial Day. I want to just remind everybody that the parade steps off at Market Basket at 10:00. We march down to the common, and as Mr. Shapu so eloquently said, we do have the ceremony that we do at the cemetery at 11:00, and it's good stuff, and it's a great way to remember what the whole weekend is really about. So if you could come on down, the more the merrier. Thank you.
Thank you. Just wanted to just give a quick update here. Certainly, I think it bears repeating, just to thank Chief Bradbury for his many years of service with the Wilmington Fire Department, and to also congratulate Rick McGlellan and Gary Donovan. Certainly, the volunteers for the various boards certainly cannot be understated with the time and effort that's put in. I wanted to give an update just quickly on the Yentile Farm Development Committee. Obviously, we had a unanimous vote for our appropriation at town meeting for $250,000 to go to the next step. I certainly want to say thank you to this board for your continued support and also to the resident base that participated in that vote. We're looking forward to continuing our work and working towards our next milestone in the project. The manager will be talking about important dates, which will be inclusive of a tentatively scheduled date of Tuesday, May 20, at this point, for our next Yentile Farm Development Committee meeting, and certainly that will be publicly posted. Want to just reiterate the points that have been made by my colleagues regarding the Whitfield project and the Historical Commission. Certainly, I'd like to indicate as chair now, moving forward, that I certainly will be interested in seeing that a full set of calendar dates for their meetings. We certainly have received those. I know that they're posted on the website, and Beverly and her team do a wonderful job making sure that our website's updated, but specifically in light of the heightened awareness to this whole eerier, I'd like to see that. I'd like to see a liaison. I'd like to see some milestone dates on our Board of Selectmen agendas to have them come in when it makes sense to do so. I'm certainly not interested in making work for people and trying to burden people, but this has received significant public attention, and certainly I want to be viewed personally and professionally, as I'm sure many of you, as my colleagues, want to be viewed as partners with various boards and committees, and certainly don't take some of the comments that were made lightly. And certainly, if they'd like to be invited, we'd like to have them participate. And I would also like to get an update on the Butters Farm project and any other projects that certainly Selectman Newhouse has already stated it, but I feel that it bears repeating for the level of importance that this has. So I just kindly ask to you, Jeff, at your convenience, to work that up on behalf of the board, and I thank you for your efforts. So important dates.
Yes, if I could, Madam Chair, before I report on those, I did want to update the board on an item that I became aware of late last week. The intersection project at Glen Road and Middlesex. As you know, the project has been delayed due to the challenges in the legislature in passing the bond transportation bill. I was speaking with Mike Newhouse, Public Works Director, late last week. He checked in with our engineering consultant from Green International and has been informed that apparently as part of the arrangement that was, came out of the bond bill that ultimately did pass, the funding that was earmarked for this project and others like it, apparently some of that money has been diverted from Mass DOT, which was going to be the funding source for this project, to the MBTA. So that it appears that the ability to, Mass DOT was intending to put this project out to bid, ultimately receive bids from contractors, and then make an award and begin the project. That appears to be further delayed now. I think it might be advisable, and would just offer this to the board, that we contact our legislative delegation and perhaps see what they might be able to do on our behalf.
I think that certainly makes sense. I recall a meeting that we've had where I believe we had those members here and certainly spoke up and were very poignant in their message to try and get that clear, that we wanted this to happen, and certainly the previous town manager was very clear in indicating his comments at the time that it simply was unacceptable for this to be delayed. So certainly, I would support that.
Yeah. No, I definitely rally around the board and the town manager's position on that. This thing, they should be constructing right now on this thing. And I remember Representative Masoli and everybody being here, "We're going to put it on the fast track, we're going to get it done," and it hasn't happened. Why? We need a better explanation than what we're hearing.
And I say this respectfully, it's tough when you have residents that say, you know, "We're putting sound barriers along the highway for quiet enjoyment in neighborhoods, but yet we have, you know, high incidence of accidents in an area that's a public safety issue," and they don't necessarily understand how dollars are allocated at the state and local level. Certainly, I'm not indicating that that's, you know, your problem to solve or anyone else's, but it's just hard to handle the public comments that you get, that people don't understand, just feel that the priorities are not in the right places, and, you know, we have to contend with that feedback.
I hate to suggest it, but I don't think we're being a squeaky enough wheel. You know, sometimes the squeaky wheel gets the grease, and we need to rattle some cages and start with our legislative delegation and hope that they can rattle some cages, you know, on Beacon Hill. That's my personal opinion, and if they think that it would be to our benefit to rattle some cages directly, then we can write some letters, or, I don't know. I think we need to start having our voice heard. I think we're maybe perceived as real small on the radar screen in terms of the level of projects that need to be allocated funding for, and maybe by virtue of that, we'll get to that when we get to that. But it's big here. It's an important project for Wilmington, and I'd really like to see what we can do to get some awareness on Beacon Hill on this thing.
I will send a letter to our legislative delegation and also be in touch with them about, first of all, to inform them about what we're hearing back and then find out what they can do to try to put this back on the fast track. Important dates, Pan-Mass Challenge Kids Ride, Cartel Lane. This is on May 18, from 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM. May 26, as was previously mentioned, the Memorial Day Parade, starting at 10:00 AM. Ceremony at the Wildwood Cemetery at 11:00 AM. Town offices will be closed on that date. May 27 is the next Board of Selectmen's meeting here, Room 9, at 7:00 PM. May 31, Boy Scout Troop 136 Yard Sale Fundraiser, Fourth of July Parking Lot, 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. June 1, Wilmington High School Graduation. June 5, Shawshank Tech Graduation. June 7, Fishing Derby, Town Beach, 9:00 AM to noon. And June 10, Olin Public Information Meeting, Wilmington Middle School Auditorium, 7:00 PM.
Thank you. So that brings the meeting to a close. We have a motion to adjourn. Do you have a second?
A second.
All those in favor unanimous? Thank you, everyone. Good night.